President, Council members and participants, we are now live.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry for the delay. It's entirely my fault. Due to the continuing threat as we start our public hearing, the public health from COVID-19 in the Delta area, city council committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft's team to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony and public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the hearings. It can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll to take attendance? And members that are in attendance, this indicates that you are present when your name is called. And ensure that we have your image displayed on the screen. Questions?
Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and Philadelphians.
Morning.
Good morning.
Council Lady Brooks. Councilman. Council Lady Godey.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gil.
Good morning, Council President, and good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Council Lady Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Quinones Sanchez. Councilman Squilla.
Morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Clark.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you. Quorum of the committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. This is a public hearing on the committee of the whole regarding Bill Number 210680. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Section 211203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Appointments to Citizens Police Oversight Commission by revising the qualifications for appointment, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses we have for today, everyone who has been invited to the meeting to testify should be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for questions or comments they have for our witnesses, I would note for the record at this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow the members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, that chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the first panel? To testify before they do that, Councilman Jones, would you like to say word prior to us the testimony?
Yes, in efforts to keep this brief, I would like some opportunity to clarify why we're doing this. We passed a very powerful ordinance that will help shape police community relations into the future. One of the things that was brought to our attention over and over again from people who represented a wide variety of law enforcement views, particularly those who are from Noble, which is a national organization of black police officers, and the Guardian Civic League, said that by the limited scope of who could apply, no one that was ever associated with the police or the FOP that would limit people like, and many of you may not remember him, Alfonso Deal, who gave his whole retirement not only to become a state rep, but to become a powerful force for modernized policing and community relationships. And not to mention people from the Guardians today that may have been out of law enforcement for five years, which this calls for to never ever, into perpetuity, be a part of this commission. And I think that was short-sighted, and we will hope to correct that with this amendment and this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Christmas, if you can call the first panel on Bill Number 210680.
Angelica Hendricks.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of Philadelphia City Council. My name is Angelica Hendricks. I am the chair of the selection committee for the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today in support of Bill Number 210680 as amended, introduced by councilmembers Clark and Jones, which would allow former police officers who have not been employed by the department or a member of a police union for over five years to qualify to potentially serve on the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. A few months ago, this body appointed me to serve on the selection panel for the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. My colleagues also selected to serve on this panel include Pastor Mark Kelly Tyler of Power, Pastor Carl Day of Cultural Changing Christians, Deputy Managing Director Vanessa Garrett-Hardley, and Samantha J. Williams, Director of Legislation and Policy for Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. Shortly after our appointment, my colleagues nominated me to chair this panel because of the several hats I have worn within the city as it relates to policing. As a former Philadelphia public defender, I have represented clients who were falsely detained, searched, arrested, and even falsely convicted. As a former senior policy analyst for the Philadelphia Police Advisory Commission, I have investigated police misconduct and navigated changing PPD policies and practices with stakeholders and community residents. And now, as a member of the Quattron Center for the Fair Administration of Justice at Penn Law, I speak with state and national stakeholders and work alongside sociologists, psychologists, and economists on how we can identify errors within the criminal justice system, including how we can better identify when police misconduct occurs and developing tools to ensure that it never happens again. This panel is made up of individuals who have different experiences with policing, from an individual who has prior criminal justice contacts to some who spiritually counsel those grieving from gun violence and policing harms, some who filed a complaint against the police themselves that led to an officer being found guilty of misconduct, to someone skilled in negotiating policing labor disputes while continuing to keep the needs of the community as a priority. Overall, we have dedicated our careers and personal time to assisting the residents of this city. The five of us have a vast array of experiences relating to policing, and we support Bill Number 210680 as amended because we all believe police have a role to play in identifying and in eradicating police misconduct and assisting the community in reimagining public safety that works for all. There are a few recent examples of this occurring. Just recently, police officers within the NYPD came forward to inform the public that some were being forced to conduct illegal race-based quotas within New York City. In Chicago, a police sergeant filed a misconduct report against his superiors where his superiors allegedly misused police resources by demanding for officers to leave their posts to protect his home and his neighborhood during the demonstrations in response to the murder of George Floyd. And just earlier this year in Philadelphia, a memo was leaked allegedly showing a captain within the department demanding for his officers to disregard the police commissioner, police policies, and an ongoing consent decree as it relates to stop and frisk. These are just a few examples of how police have contributed to identifying potential misconduct. The selection panel believes if we are truly to dismantle the blue wall of silence, we must provide police with an opportunity to contribute. However, this opportunity must be qualified. The calls, protests, marches, letters written, and even the unfortunate lives lost have shown us that we cannot afford to continue the status quo. Those wishing to contribute to CPOC as a commissioner must be critically examined by a civilian group of selection members. Councilmember Jones is offering a floor amendment today to do just that. I believe we must continue to preclude former sworn members of the department or members of the union from serving on the selection panel. The selection panel remaining civilian is key, and I will explain why. Selection panelists are appointed to decide whom shall be nominated to city council to fill a CPOC commissioner vacancy. These five members must meet, draft an application, interview applicants, and critically evaluate what skills are necessary to lead this agency. For example, my colleagues and I met upon our appointment and decided five key criteria to evaluate candidates. As such, we are reviewing every applicant to determine, one, how their identity reflects the diversity of this city; two, their community experience in advocating for their neighbors; three, a system's thinking for brainstorming how to navigate systemic barriers; four, experience in ensuring justice and advocating for transparency; and lastly, a commitment to bringing for structural transformative changes. This last pillar is what we believe the residents of this city demanded and what the original intent of this bill called for: structural transformative change. In the words of Audre Lorde, "The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house." In the aspect of police oversight, those selected to nominate the next commissioners for CPOC must not come from the sworn members of that department or the former sworn members of that department. They must continue to be selected from civilian residents, the clergy, the formerly incarcerated, the community activists, and even our youngest Philadelphians. Therefore, I believe former police can contribute to CPOC, but the role of selection members must continue to be reserved for civilians. If a formerly sworn member of the department believes that their qualifications, experiences, and endeavors to change their department can persuade a panel of activists, civil rights attorneys, community leaders, and all Philadelphia residents that they are needed to serve on the CPOC commission, then they should make that petition. A former police officer who can pass this rigorous examination from the selection panel should be able to be considered nominated and put through an additional rigorous examination before city council, such as every other nominee. If a selection panel misjudges an applicant and if city council mistakenly places an individual on the commission, there are mechanisms in place to ensure that person's removal. I have faith that if a member seated to serve on the commission is unfit to complete their duties, then city council members, the mayor, and most importantly, the residents of this city will make a demand for hearing for that commissioner's removal. I would also like to use this opportunity to provide an update on those who have applied to join CPOC as a commissioner. As of today, the selection panel has reviewed more than 225 out of 316 applications. All five of us have reviewed every single application, and we look forward to interviewing those selected for further discussions. These 316 applications reflect the diverse makeup of the city. Fifty-eight percent of the applicants identified as black or African-American. Twenty-nine percent identified as white. Six percent identified as Hispanic. Three percent identified as Latino. And three percent identified as Asian, with only a few applicants preferring not to answer the question. As for age, the applicants range from 18 to 75 and older. Twenty-one point eight percent of applicants are 25 to 34. Twenty-one point eight percent of applicants are 55 to 64. And 20% of applicants are 35 to 44. Income levels are also very diverse. Thirty percent of applicants selected that their income is 50 to 100,000. Twenty-nine percent selected that their income is 25 to 50,000. And 14% selected that their incomes are less than $25,000. I am confident the nine candidates that we are tasked to identify and present to this body will reflect the diverse makeup of the city. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from members of the committee or this particular witness? Thank you very much. On the panel, let me, for the record, want to say Councilman O is present. Just let that be reflected. Pastor Carl Day and Reverend Mark Tyler are also a member of that panel. Are they giving any testimony, or does your testimony reflect the panel's perspective?
Yes. Pastor Mark Tyler is here and present for any questions as well. Yes.
Council President, I did have a question for.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gil.
Yes, good morning. Thank you so much. Of the applicants, are any current or former police officers for the panel?
Yes, there are. Not for current. The bill continues to preclude current officers from applying to the, from applying or being considered. There have been applicants from former sworn members of the department, mainly because this bill was introduced months prior. And so, the original application did have a caveat on there explaining the at least five-year separation from the department. But we have not yet started the process of actually interviewing applicants. We are going through the paper applications right now, the electronic applications, as well as the video applications, because we did allow individuals to apply with video or social media.
And how many applicants are previously former members of the police departments?
I don't have the exact number, but they are very, very few. Very, very, very few.
Does the current bill cap the number of police officers or former police officers who could serve on the commission?
No, it does not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from members of the committee for this witness? And I just wanted to be clear. Reverend Tyler and Pastor Day are not testifying, or are they available for questions?
I believe they are not testifying but are available for questions.
Well, make sure.
Pastor Tyler is here.
Make sure. Okay. All right. Well, good morning, both of you. Thank you. Thank you all. Reverend, you have something?
You're on mute.
You're good? All right. You're on mute, Reverend.
He's actually on mute. You just can't hear him.
All right. Okay, good. All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony and your availability today. And we appreciate your work and your commitment to this very, very significant process.
Thank you.
So here are no further questions from the members of the panel, and there being no other panels to testify. We'll take a brief five-minute break to allow the public to be connected so they can testify on Bill Number 210680. Take a brief recess.
President, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you very much. We're back, and good morning. And if you're connected, just please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
This is Marta Guttenberg. I'm ready to testify if this is the time for me to testify.
Please proceed. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing the public to testify. And as I begin to speak, I don't want to sound too much like a Grinch. I understand the reasons why members retired and former officers might feel called to bring their skills to the Oversight Commission. I, and some of my objections have been spoken to already as the measure was introduced. But I still have a kind of bad feeling about permitting former officers to serve on the committee. And it's as much for optics as anything else. The former officers remain FOP members. Their pensions and benefits are due to their FOP membership. And they have a debt of obligation to that organization. I feel that under many other parallel circumstances, they would be asked to recuse themselves from a discussion of their former employer. So I would like to bring to the attention of the, of council that there's a possibility of real or presumed conflict of interest in permitting such people to serve. And I'm hoping that this will be taken into account, perhaps not by rejecting the amendment altogether, but tweaking it in some way so that people, the citizens, can have trust in the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate your participation today. And we'll take all you said into account. Thank you. Mr. Christmas, are there any other individuals testifying today from the public?
Councilman, a citizen, Alicia Dorsey, submitted testimony by way of email. And if you're satisfied, Mr. President, I will just briefly read it.
Sure.
Okay, this is the testimony submitted by citizen Alicia Dorsey. I would like to add testimony on Bill 210680. We, the people, deserve to have oversight of the Philadelphia police in a comfortable, non-threatening environment. We don't trust the police. That is why we are requesting citizens, aka community oversight, without corrupt police. If police are to be part of the Oversight Committee, then we should have the right to view their ethics and work records. We should be allowed to interview them and see if they are good fit for everyone on the Oversight Commission. Please submit this as my testimony. Alicia Dorsey, family community advocate. That concludes our remarks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christmas. And that concludes our testimony from members of the public. So that will conclude our hearing, and we will now go into our public meeting. There being no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses to testify when asked if there is anyone else present in this hearing whose name we have failed to call that wishes to offer testimony on the bill being considered today. Hearing done. I want to thank all the panels and the witnesses for their participation today. We value your opinions, and I now invite all panels of witnesses to please disconnect from the meeting before we go into our public, public meeting. We will now pause the proceedings briefly as multiple participants leave the hearing. It appears that that's been a long enough pause. And we're going to start our public meeting. This concludes the public hearing of the committee. We will now go into a public meeting to consider the action to be taken on the bill before the committee today. And we are now proceeding to public meeting. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll to take attendance? Members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present when your name is called. Mr. Christmas, call the roll.
Council Lady Bass.
I am present.
Council Lady Brooks. Councilman Dom.
I'm present. Thank you.
Council Lady Godey.
Present.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Present.
Councilman Green.
Present.
Council Lady Gil.
I am present.
Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman O.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Present.
Council Lady Parker.
Present.
Council Lady Quinones Sanchez. Councilman Squilla.
Present.
Councilman Thomas.
Present.
Council President Clark.
Present, and thank you all very much. We will go into our public meeting. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion on the amendment to Bill Number 210680.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 210680. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members, and I move for the adoption of the approval of the amendment. Second.
Thank you. The chair notes to the record, Councilmember Parker seconded the motion as been moved and properly seconded that the amendment to Bill Number 210680 be approved. All those in favor, the motion was signed by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and amendment to Bill Number 210680 has been approved. Chair again recognizes Councilmember Jones for motion of Bill Number 210680 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I move that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I move that bill number two one zero six eight zero as amended. Be appro- be uh, moved from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and I further move that the rules of council be suspended to allow first reading of this bill at our next scheduled meeting of council.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly seconded that the bill number two one zero six eight oh as amended be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Council President, I would like to, oh, no.
That is Councilwoman Gill. Let the record reflect, Councilwoman Gill voted nay. And the motion is approved. Thank you all very much. This concludes the business before the committee of the whole today. Uh, thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.